Careful mute, and you notice if you're green, you're good. Okay, great.
Those are the changes.
This three on the bottom right, when it hits red, do they launch?
Yes. Yes, there's a trapdoor.
We can't take them any.
That turns, now it's on. On.
Good evening and welcome. I'll call to order the City of San Clemente Planning Commission for Wednesday, April 17, 2024, here in the City Council chambers. Who would like to leave us on the pledge? Gary? Please do.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call. All commissioners are present. Special order of business, there is none tonight, no special presentations, which takes us to the minutes from March 20. Anybody have any comments about the minutes? Or a motion would be in order.
Would you approve?
Second.
Okay, what's been approved and seconded for the, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of March 20, 2024. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I will abstain, I was not here.
We have one abstention. Two abstentions. Okay. Davis and Prescott Laufler abstaining. Item six is any public comment, any member of the audience that wishes to address the Planning Commission on any item of public interest that is not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment tonight? See, none? Move to the consent calendar. There are no items on tonight's consent calendar, so that'll take us right to our public hearings. Item eight. We've got three. Item A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, 21-268. It's an AT&amp;T wireless telecommunications facility at 4159 Casero Risco, and the staff is recommending that we table this item tonight. Mr. Lightfoot, did you want to speak on that?
Just to provide some context, so the staff member from the applicant team that was here and presenting last time is no longer with that company, and so they were not able to provide the exhibits that the Planning Commission requested in time for this public hearing. Once they provide those, Mr. Champa will bring that item back. So we will renotice, since this was tabled, we'll do the noticing again and mailers again related to that item.
Okay.
Chair, Cosgrove. I move that we accept staff recommendation and table the item to a future date.
And Prescott Laufler, seconds. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Item B is a continued public hearing, project 23-083. It's the Sea Cliff Hotel and Restaurant, which is the consideration for development of 11-unit boutique motel and restaurant with 25 outdoor seats in, at Pasadena Court within the Pier Bowl. The staff is recommending to us tonight that we continue this item to May 22. Jonathan, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Sure, thank you, Chair. I'll just provide some context there as well. The city staff review is complete on this item, but as with all projects that go to public hearings, we often work with third-party reviewers or agencies, and so OCFA has some remaining comments that they're working with the applicant on being addressed. The applicant's also working on finalizing their water quality management plan, and so those were anticipated to be completed by this time, but they were not. And the applicant is not available to be here on May 8, so they requested the May 22 continuance date.
Any questions for staff about the continuance?
Chair, I move that we accept staff recommendation and continue this item until May 22.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCann and seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item C. HC is a development permit, 23-416 Bauer Edition at 106 West Paseo de Cristobal. And this is a consideration for a 603-foot second-story addition and balcony addition to an existing single-family residence located at 106 West Paseo de Cristobal within the residential low zone and coastal zone. And it's also adjacent to historic structure. Jonathan, did you have, as a public hearing, I want to, first of all, after reopening, I want to officially open the public hearing and just briefly ask if all my colleagues on the dais, if there's anybody that has any disclosures they need to make as part of this public hearing before we commence. Commissioner Crandall?
I did receive emails from, I think it was Don Brown regarding this, and reviewed that.
I did as well.
Only one correspondence I think I had on that one.
I got it from staff.
Correct. There was one email from former Commissioner Don Brown. There was also an email from the adjacent property owner that was sent to the full Planning Commission.
Okay. What we're going to do tonight, just for the members of the audience, is we're going to receive a staff report, and that will be presented by our city planner, Jonathan Lightfoot. There may be, may or not be questions from the commissioners on the staff report. Once that, those are concluded, then we're going to ask Mr. Bauer, who's the applicant, to come up and make his presentation. And Mr. Bauer will have 10 minutes to do that presentation. Then we'll take public comments. So if anyone in the audience, member of the public, wishes to speak on this, I would ask that you grab a blue speaker card and then hand that to Jonathan, and we'll take those comments after the applicant. And those comments are limited to three minutes, and then we will have our discussion and decision on this development permit. Okay, so that's the overview. With that, we are ready for your staff report, Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, it looks like I misordered my slides, so bear with me while I'll get back to the title and we'll skip one, that's the placeholder. So the item in front of you this evening is a development permit. One point of clarification, the commission reviewed and recommended approval to the council of a streamlining ordinance at the end of last year. That changed the type of permit, so this was initially taken in as a cultural heritage permit. Now, cultural heritage permits only apply to actual historic properties. So this was initially taken in as a cultural heritage permit. Prior to that ordinance, anything that was adjacent to a historic property also fell under that designation. So it's now a development permit as a result of that streamlining ordinance, requires the same level of review, but again, it's no longer under that cultural heritage permit designation, just providing that point of clarity in case anyone had followed this from the beginning, this particular item. So the Bauer Edition is proposed at 106 West Paseo de Cristobal. As far as the project summary, the proposal includes a 603-square-foot second-story addition above an existing single-family residence, as well as a 180-square-foot balcony addition. The property itself is a 5,350-square-foot interior lot. You can see in this image, the bottom left, the immediate vicinity. So we have El Camino Real to the northeast, and then, of course, this property fronting on Paseo de Cristobal. The two lots that have red are on our designated local historic list. This zone here is residential low and is also within our coastal zone. And as mentioned previously, this property is adjacent to a historic site. Development permit is required, and this item was reviewed by our Design Review Subcommittee in November of '23 and in February. The existing street scene is shown in this image, and the trigger for this review would be, again, the adjacency to a historic property. Both of these, those properties can be seen in this image, the historic one to the right at a slightly higher grade, and the current residence on the left. This image is a rendering of the proposal, which, again, adds that second story as well as the balcony that can be seen here on this elevation. On the ground level, there's an existing front yard patio that was previously approved that's shown in this rendering as well. So the staff recommendation on this item is to determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to the Class 1 guidelines for existing facilities and to adopt Resolution PC 24-007 that would approve development permit 23-416, subject to the attached conditions of approval. That concludes the staff presentation.
Great. This did come before the DRSC a couple of times, actually, and so there was quite, there was some good interaction on that item there as well, which is included in the staff report. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Commissioner Camp?
Yeah, Jonathan, we had requested some revisions back in, was it November? And those came back to us in, was it like February, something like that?
Correct.
And then I think there was a couple other comments that we had. So is this changed from our February meeting at all? And if so, can you identify what's different?
I can. I'm going to reinitiate the screen share. The subcommittee's recommendations in February were fairly minor. They reflected the staff recommendation. You see at the rear portion of this image, the gable here was shown previously as a flat white siding, and so one of the recommendations was to have that match the remainder of the property. To your point of the first round of review, one of the issues that was highlighted by both staff and the committee was an inconsistent style of architecture, and so between the first and second reviews were the predominant changes. And that included, among other things, the modification of a somewhat lean-to shed roof that existed on the side of this front elevation, and so that was the significant modification to provide a more cohesive gable that enclosed the front elevation porch, and updating all of the siding to be a more consistent style.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you for the staff report, Jonathan. So now is the opportunity for the applicant to make their presentation, so I will call upon Douglas Bauer. And Mr. Bauer, you should have like a 10-minute indicator on the top of the screen there, so that's your, that's your window. It's all yours.
Thanks, Doug. You hear me okay? Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate the time, I really do. Jonathan, if you could key it up, it's just three, really three slides total, but really just two that I'll talk to tonight. So if you would advance it to the next slide, that would be great. So as Jonathan showed the commission earlier, this was, this is the existing layout of the residence as it exists today. I just want to point out that we purchased the residence in July of 2017, my wife and I, and it came like this, except for the porch. In 2018, I permitted and actually personally built the porch, but we always knew that we needed to beautify the residence, and we, and our, also our desire is to complete the second floor and put in a real master bedroom, which we don't have now in the residence. We have an assortment of bedrooms, but no master bedroom and associated bath, so that's also a part of our objectives here. And then personally, I, there's two things I don't like about the existing design, and one is the single dormer over a set of stairs inside the house. It's kind of an odd configuration for us, and then the front porch stoop is very low quality. I've had to repair it several times. So there's reasons to do this for us. They have to do with functionality and beautification. I would say those are the two, two areas we're focusing on the most here. Next slide, this is my last slide. I want to say that I really appreciated the design review, subcommittee suggestions and recommendations and follow-up, both from November and January. It opened my eyes as to the process. I was working closely with David Corillo at the time, and also Carla. Lately, I got to know Jonathan, but the suggestions were important, and it caused me to step back and take a look at the entire residence and say, what are we trying to do here with respect to beautification, not just functionality? Because the neighborhood we live in is beautiful. There's a lot of diversity in the neighborhood. There's modern structures, there's beach cottages, there's a lot of decorative items. So even some of the smaller touches here, like a decorative chimney that you can't see from this, this angle, we went ahead and did those things. So once again, I appreciated that. And I, the last thing I want to say is, my wife and I are committed to completing the project in compliance with requirements, and that includes any items prior to permitting. And so right now, we're working on the landscaping plan for the front yard, as an example, so we'll, we'll get that done and get it, that done to the satisfaction of the staff, meet the square feet requirements, and we'll do that before we pull permits. Mr. Camp, I wanted to mention one thing out of the February Design Review Committee meeting that was a suggestion, was also to recess the ceiling on the porch, on the gable end there, and darken it, because your comment was it looked a little heavy. So that was the last item we took and ran with that, and Gus made those changes to the design. So I really, once again, really appreciate the review process here. And that concludes my comments, and the timer is still at 10 minutes, so I like that.
We're getting used to our new setup here, so, but you're, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
Just one sec. I want to see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you. If you don't mind taking some questions, let me open it up. Commissioner Crandall, do you have some questions?
Talk to the designer, questions are direct, we can handle.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Let me just put you on pause then, to see if there's any questions for Mr. Bauer.
I do.
Okay.
Just curious, is, am I saying this correctly? The, the master bathroom, do you have access to it off of the hall also? On the floor plan?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. So, Bart, you want to speak to the architect?
Just some inconsistencies that I don't want staff to get confused on.
Okay. Mr. Bauer, do you mind if your architect addresses the commission?
Sure.
Thanks.
Jonathan, do you have sheet A3?
I'll be able to.
Now that I look at it, I think you may have actually corrected the ones I was concerned on. There were some erroneous overhangs on the existing sheets.
Which one?
Oh, which, front elevation existing, I'm not even going to worry about that for staff now. How about I look at it again?
Okay.
Okay, I think I found what I was looking for.
Okay, thanks for your willingness to speak to us. Sure, Commissioner Davis has a question for, is it the applicant?
Probably the architect. So what's the existing roof height at its highest versus, I should look this up, but do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, it shows here, like.
Yeah.
I don't have my glasses, but it's, it's really mentioned here, like, which is the existing roof is, can you make it zoom out?
Is it 22 feet?
Yes, yeah. 22? Yeah, 22.
Yeah, it says 23, no? Oh, that's from Gray.
Yeah, and, and it's in a, and the zoning is permits 25.
We're not going higher, like, from the existing, like, the existing height is same. We have second floor on the back, you know?
Anybody else? Okay. I see a few members of the audience, but I don't have any speaker cards. Does someone from the audience want to speak to this? Okay. Great. Great. Why don't you just come on? Okay, another person? Fantastic. I've got two. So Dylan Moser, did you want to go first?
I appreciate you guys listening to my, my comments. We have, we have no issues with our, our neighbors. I just want to voice some concerns. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the proposed addition next to the Ole Hansen Historic Home located at 104 West Paseo de Cristobal. As the owner and a resident who deeply values the historical integrity of our neighborhood, I believe it is crucial to voice my objections to this project. I'm Dylan Moser, and my wife, my wife's family has owned this house at 104 West Paseo de Cristobal since 1985. She grew up in this home, and now we are raising our two daughters there. This is our home, and it's very dear to our hearts. Every historic home has a story to tell, a narrative woven into its walls, windows, and doorways. These homes are not just architectural relics, they are repositories of our collective memory and cultural heritage. The property our home sits on was purchased by Ole Hansen himself on December 21, 1928. He enlisted the help of his architect, Virgil Westbrook, to build a single-family residence on this property, beginning in January of 1929. This home stands as a testament to our city's past, embodying the craftsmanship and architectural style of a bygone era. Any addition constructed adjacent to this home has the potential to compromise its historic integrity irreversibly. Such alterations could detract from the home's original design and diminish its value as a historical landmark. In addition, the proposed addition, as outlined in the plan submitted, includes windows and a deck that directly overlooks my property. This design raises significance and concerns about privacy, privacy invasion, and it would allow unrestricted views into our home. As a homeowner, I value my privacy, and I'm deeply concerned about the potential negative impact this addition could have on my family's quality of life. We are a beach community, we're used to being pretty close to each other, but we just want to keep that into consideration. I propose a compromise with the addition planned at 106. The majority of the homes on our street have a very prominent setback, and the setback currently proposed is very minimal. I would like to suggest a larger setback that allows less obstructive views of our home. I also took a picture of our, our largest window, kind of out facing where their current property is, and as you can see, the new addition would just be basically right in our faces, which I know there's no, you know, I can't make a, a comment about views and things like that, but it is just very encroaching on, on the property. And we have seen some other construction projects in the past go in where they kind of dwarf the home next to them, and we kind of want to keep that as, as open as possible. I did submit a letter also earlier that had a photo on it that you could see from the street view, just trying to keep as much of the historic structure visible from the street. We did an addition about 10 years ago, and we made a lot of compromises to set that addition back as far as possible so that we could keep the historic structure viewable to the public.
Thank you. You've gone over, so.
Okay.
Did you have any other?
That was, that was basically it.
Okay. And you did send us an email too.
I did, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moser.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. We do have another speaker. Carol Doherty, welcome.
Yes, my name is Carol Doherty, and I'm a neighbor of the applicant, and I'm just here to support them. I, I think the addition that they're planning is quite handsome, and it's an improvement over what they have now. And I also appreciated the second story that Dylan and his family put up several years ago. So basically, I wanted to support my neighbors and, and say yay to the addition. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else from the audience that wants to speak on this? Okay. There are no other audience members that want to speak. It is our process that, Mr. Potter, you can have a few more minutes if you want to speak to any of the comments that were made. You can come back up and speak to them if you want to. It's up, it's your option.
Maybe just one.
Please, come on up.
Regarding proximity to the historical residence, our, our neighbors at 104, part of our design process took, took that into consideration, and if you look at setbacks, we have a nine-foot setback from our property line, and four feet in excess of the five that would be required on that side of the property. And if you take the total measurement from our house to the historic residence, it's about 26 feet, and it was important that we maintain that, that dimension, and not try to encroach in, in that area at all. And so that was really something that we thought about. I thought about it carefully when we put the, the design together. And also regarding the balconies and the porch structure, the primary porch comes off of the side of the house facing downstreet. So, you know, I'm not real sure about privacy issues with regard to that. I'm, I'm still thinking that through, but I, I don't think there's really a concern there. Anyway, I appreciate the comments, the ability to make a few more comments, and any questions you may have at this point, happy to answer.
Okay. Thanks. Does anyone have any final comments for the applicant before we?
I do.
Okay.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Great.
The front of the home, the, the existing front setback, are you bringing the home any closer to the street?
No.
Okay.
The existing setback is 22 feet, and the existing porch stoop encroaches into that setback two more feet, making it an even 20. And the new pillars or columns in the front over the new stoop do exactly the same thing, so it's been maintained.
Thank you.
Could you clarify for me on the deck? So the deck, there's only one deck, and I'm looking at it, it's in the front.
There's one deck, it wraps around, but there's a large porch to the left side of the rendition, downstreet.
Downstreet, on the other side.
Yeah. And that would be where we would have things like outdoor furniture and other accoutrements to enjoy the environment, not really along the front. The setback in the front and the front porch is really to make the total design work. We're not going to be hanging out on a three-foot segment of balcony, that's unrealistic.
And then I'm looking at the, one of the first renditions, I'm just going to hold it up because I don't know what the number is. It would be this one. And I can see a wall that separates you from the neighbor here, so your setback is actually from that wall, nine feet?
Right, nine feet. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any more questions?
Very good.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. I'm going to open it up for discussion. I will close the public hearing and turn to my commissioners and ask who would like to lead us in discussion. Perhaps one of our design review subcommittee members wants to provide their thoughts. I'm open to either one of you guys, if you, either one of you guys want to lead off.
I'll jump in on just a.
Thank you.
A, a technical part. This particular addition doesn't really affect the historic house if you're driving, I guess it would be southwest down Cristobal. Coming up to the northeast on the other side of the road, you're quite a ways back, so I don't think we're going to be affecting visibility from that side of the road. If you're walking, it's a little bit different situation. The one thing that you could say is a positive coming up that way, it may actually screen a little bit of the second-story addition on the historic. So you would see more of the true one-story historic house without the distraction of that, so. The arguments I've heard pro and con against the, the mass of the building, et cetera, I think may be over-exaggerated, and I think they are abatable, is what we need to review and approve.
Wells, did you want to speak to this? Commissioner Camp?
The applicant came in initially in November with a design that was, I would say, very technical in terms of, you know, the remodel, and really had more to do with just elevating a floor plan that worked for them. And there were quite a few areas, you know, of concern from a design standpoint. And, you know, things like, you know, roof elements that didn't fit with the new design. So it was really focused more on getting, I think Mr. Bauer mentioned, just getting our master bedroom to fit without as much concern about the overall design of the home. So we, you know, pointed out quite a few of those things, and they came back with a much better design, which had, you know, considered the entire composition of the home, and, and we didn't get that the first time. And so, you know, we're pleased with the response, with the effort that was put in. There was a few more things, and, and they're pretty minor, but they have also been addressed. So just wanted to thank you for spending the time and the effort to really upgrade the home, and so it's a big improvement, you know, over what's there. We certainly were looking at the impact on the historic residence, especially the portion, as, as Commissioner Crandall mentioned, that is truly historic, not the second-floor addition, but the front portion. And as he mentioned, we, we really felt like the impact was minimal. It's not competing with the house, with the historic residence, because it's a different style. That was one of the other things that we noticed in the beginning. The first submittal didn't really have a style, you know? It was, again, you know? And we talked about that. So you can see now, there's, there truly is this sort of beach cottage style, and I think even with the second floor, because of the sort of cavity you have in the front and the shadows, I think it works, the composition works. So that was the reason that we, you know, recommended approval, and I would continue to, to recommend that. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, that is very helpful. Anyone? Commissioner McCann?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about the, you know, there was a suggestion that, well, maybe the setback, it should be set further back because it impedes the view of the historic residence, but the existing, the, the single-story element of the existing home is already at that location. They're only talking about bringing the second story out to match the first-story facade line. So that doesn't, you know, anybody that's less than 10 feet tall isn't going to be, it's going to have the same obstruction. Like adding, bringing the second story out doesn't impede the view of the historic portion of the home any more than it's already impeded by the existing first story. With that being said, I, I've reviewed this project, I have, you know, listened to the design review subcommittee members, and I find this project as proposed consistent with the zoning, and I can make the findings that are in the staff reports, I'll be supportive of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, did you have any comments?
I, I drove by the property today and looked, looked at it from every which angle, and the wall is already existing. It's a pretty tall wall, and along that wall, there's already a bunch of hedges anyway. So I, I really don't think the, the existing, or the, the proposed project is really going to do a lot to the original Ole Hansen. I think it will to the second story, which, I mean, props to you for getting that, but that's, that's my sense. I, I like the project.
Okay. Commissioner McCann, did you have any comments that you want to make?
I can understand the comments of the next-door neighbor, that it will change the, you know, the pattern of the sun, but if you look at the whole street, you know, it's already happened where there's renovations going on, and most people do pull out almost to their, you know, the front easement. I don't really have the intent to tell them to pull back their patio or something to offset, because other people have already done, you know, what they've proposed. They're within the envelope. If you look at Table 1, matter of fact, their side yard, because you have the nine feet, so they're given an extra four feet as a consideration, plus there's a driveway. So the impact on the sunshine from east to west is not quite as bad as it could be. So I don't think there's any reason why I could withhold not being in favor.
Okay. Commissioner Prescott, off Florida, do you have any comments?
I too am sympathetic with the neighbor. It is going to be a change, and I would find it also difficult, so I do understand. Usually setbacks are far closer, I mean, they're, we've seen them four feet, sometimes zero, and this seems very generous, so I'm pleased about that. I mean, the nine and a half and nine and three that's on the side, that's, that's very generous, as well as the rear and the front. So I think they've done everything they can to narrow the footprint on their side and then also increase their footage and gain an extra story. Our city is changing, and I can't, under the rules that we have, I can't find any reason to deny it based on what I'm looking at here, though I do understand, you know?
Okay. Yeah, we have, just for the audience, we have a job where, that, we're to interpret. So there are six areas of interpretation. One is the general plan consistency, which we, is very obvious, that's yes, that's a yes. Compliance with zoning, that's a yes. Proposed project is consistent with city design guidelines, that's what we see to in the design review subcommittee, so that, that is in compliance, as determined by that group as well. It's not, the project is not detrimental to public safety. The proposed project is in character and compatible with properties in the neighborhood, which I think we've discussed tonight. And then lastly, the proposed project does not have a negative visual or physical impact upon the historic structure. I think we hear what we heard tonight and from Mr. Moser, but I think all the commissioners, what I'm hearing, are not seeing that negative visual impact. In fact, Commissioner McCann, I think your point is the existing structure is protruding as much as this will be, no more. So it's no net change, other than the height. Okay. So with that conversation on my part, I'm open to any final conclusion, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the planning, I mean, the staff's recommendation to number one, determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to state CEQA guidelines, 14 CCR, 15 301, Class 1, existing facilities, and also adopt, number two, adopt Resolution PC 24007, approving development permit 23-416, boundary addition subject to attached conditions of approval.
Second, second by Commissioner Crandall. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the staff recommendations. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Bauer, your, now starts your appeal period of 10 days, after which time, if there's no appeal made, then your development permit will be processed. So, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Moser, for your comments tonight. Appreciate it. We have no new business or old business. That takes us to Agenda Item 11, report. That takes us to Agenda Item 11, Reports of Commissioners and Staff. Yeah, we're under reports. Did you have a report? No. Did you have something you want to bring up? Sounds like you wanted to bring something up?
In new business, I think you want to.
Okay.
In new business, is this time for that?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any agendas, new business, but under Commission Reports, you can feel free to bring it up.
Okay. So looking at this project, driving around Southwest and speaking to Zach Ponson, just about the, and you kind of reminded me tonight when we were talking about the sidewalk situation down there. I live down there and the sidewalks are every which way to Sunday. They are, you know, from red faded concrete and apparently has to be red. Is that correct, the sidewalks?
This is a complicated topic. It's been reviewed a few times, so the hodgepodge is a result of different analysis over times or different preferences initiated by, typically by the council. There's only a couple of locations where we specifically require the tiles to be inserted. So we have some designated kind of historic sidewalks, Cabrillo being one of those obviously down in the Pier Bowl. So there's some locations where we will mandate the red tile, but beyond that, the red sidewalk is no longer, like the painted concrete is no longer a requirement, but you still see some pinkish remnants of that around town.
So it's kind, it's to the historic area, right? It really is so messed up down there. I think it's suitable to have a study session on it from the planning commission and see if we could hash something out and come up with some ideas and, and I know you can't get old tiles, but you can get newer stuff that looks as close as possible, but it's a wreck. Unless we cross the finish line and really get some really good direction, it's going to be a mess down there. It looks horrible.
So what are you proposing as, are you proposing a standard? Are you, what are you proposing?
I propose a study session by the planning commission and hash something out and what?
So hash, hash what out? A policy?
Hash thoughts.
Okay.
Let's hash some thoughts, see if we could get a viable solution and then we could, including what the staff has been through and ideas and thoughts from the past, learn and build upon. And then if we could come to something that's logical and makes sense, then we propose it probably to the city council and see what they feel about it. I'll bring some videos, I'll bring some pictures. It's a wreck.
Okay, so let me repeat back what I think I hear you proposing. You've made some observations around town of various styles of sidewalk construction and what you're observing is that they're very, they're all different and that there is no cohesive sidewalk in that district or that area. And your observation is that because of all these different styles, colors, textures, it detracts from the area. And so your feeling is maybe there's some attention should be put on, on the situation as a whole and perhaps there could be a review of the current zoning and maybe policy so that as future projects go forward, there's a cohesive plan going forward of what to do? Is that kind of where you're going?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the start of it.
Okay. Jonathan, what's your feeling about that?
I think it'd be worth taking a look at, you know, what's the history? I think that'd be valuable for everyone to have that sense. And then broadly, I think the other thing to share is that commonly, if we have building permits that come in in excess of $50,000, and that's, that's the threshold at which property owners are required to install sidewalk along their frontage, that's been a conversation in the past. And so if it is in one of those areas where there is, you know, tiles, then we'll try to keep that consistent where the portion that they install has to be consistent. That is an element of why there's some hodgepodge to those, that there, you know, historically some of these streets didn't have any sidewalks and so they're progressively being installed. Occasionally, the city will use funds, so CDBG funds have been used for that project on Cabrillo downtown when all those sidewalks were installed. And so that's an opportunity here and there as funds are available to do a large swath all at once. So I only provide those comments just to get a sense of like why there currently is some, some hodgepodge and, but also to caution that we wouldn't be able to, obviously it would be up to council to find funding to do any kind of implementation beyond what's done. One avenue we could look at through that study session is whether or not there could be potential for a grant through our CLG, so our historic preservation program through the state. We always have a window to apply for grants in the spring. And so this, if we have a study session on that topic, could be something that channels into a potential grant that is used to study and or develop standards for implementation. That could be one avenue that we look at.
What part of our municipal code specifies the type of materials and design of the sidewalk?
Yeah, so our municipal code doesn't provide those specifications. There's engineering technical specifications that are separate, so there's references to that document within the municipal code. And so our engineering technical standards are what are used for the guidelines on a number of things, commercial parking lots, turnarounds, curb cuts and sidewalks.
Is that something that you, the staff would be amenable to, if we did a study session to maybe look at proposing some zoning language that we could recommend to the council for adoption that would be public and helpful?
Yeah.
Would that be useful?
I think that there would be some value to that. The, I'll caveat that to say that we may have a, within that conversation, also a review of the things that are on the docket so that there is a sense of prioritization. I, you know, while there is value to this, I would say that it currently isn't going to be at the same value as our coastal IP work, right? So I think that that's another piece of that conversation. But I think there's an avenue to review the history, potentially apply for a grant and then have, you know, a conversation in that way. We have, what, where I jumped to off the cuff is we have a scenic corridor plan for landscape that's also in desperate need of being replaced or updated. So maybe there's an avenue through that effort as well where we take a holistic look at our streets in that way.
Is there any damage? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there any damage to the tiles at this point? Anything that?
Oh, yeah, it's like trip hazards and such, yeah. It's everywhere down there and more so down there than, than most places it's older, right? But I'm not, I wasn't really thinking the city funded or grant, but as everything's getting remodeled down there, we put it on the homeowner or whomever is putting out the money for the remodel. Because right now, it's whatever, whatever you could kind of throw in the space, it feels like.
Can I weigh in on this? It sounds to me, first of all, it sounds like a public works issue. Is that, is that accurate, Jonathan?
Yeah, so planning wouldn't be involved in any of the installation. It's commonly a planning condition when we do have projects that trigger some kind of a sidewalk, a specific improved style beyond the traditional concrete sidewalk. That happened with the Miramar as another example. In that area, we don't have the tiles, but it's more of a crisscross brick pattern. And so that typically will be a planning condition of approval that's implemented to look for improving consistency in the area. But it is a public works standard and public works that would do the inspections, et cetera. And if the city takes on the project, obviously public works would be the one that leads that.
Who would take on the project of, because it sounds like if we were to do the study session, that there needs to be, you know, to me, a significant amount of staff time to go out, look at many of these different conditions, put it into a staff report and a study session format and all that stuff. Who would, who would do that? Public works or planning?
It would be a hybrid, but I think that I would have Zach Ponson take more of the lead on this. I think he's been the staff person with the most regular contact with this topic.
Right, I mean, that makes sense to me, there's public works. It also seems to me like this has the, well, my impression is, is that, and I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, about, you know, the homeowners are doing a major remodel, they need to do it. That should already be happening, like Jonathan said, if it's over $50,000, they can ask for that to be done.
That over $50,000 is installing a sidewalk where there is not existing sidewalk?
I don't know. They could be asked to redo failing trip hazard sidewalk that's there. Whether they're being asked or not, that's a different question. I don't know, but I think that they could be. Public works and planning has the ability to ask for that if the work is over $50,000. Is that accurate, Jonathan?
So he's correct in that the trigger point is more so when there's no existing sidewalk. However, often through these projects, we end up with situations where up and arounds are required or other modifications where there ends up being a substantial amount of the sidewalk being replaced. And in those cases, yes, we're, we're not going to be looking for a landing where there's two different types of sidewalk across a frontage. So we will try to work with the property owners in those cases to have a cohesive frontage when those types of improvements are needed.
Okay. My impression is that to do this comprehensively would require a big man hour effort of survey of all the different locations and conditions. And I just think we should, I think, I hear what Commissioner Davis is saying and I think it's of value to consider it. I don't know if it's a whole study session or if it's a, if it's an item that's, I think you guys should look at it and come back to us and tell us what you think. Is it a whole study session? Is it a, is it a report to commission? Is, you know, what, what does it look like? But I would be concerned about trying to obligate staff to a big time consuming, resource consuming effort when there hasn't been direction from council on it.
I want to hear from Barton.
Yeah, you know, my thought on this, John, is that it wouldn't necessarily require a staff report for us to have a study session. It would be a matter of getting Jonathan, maybe Adam, maybe Zach and maybe Chris Wright, who has lived through the era of change of how we got to where we are. And then we discuss between ourselves, do we see that there's a way of attacking this? And then that would go to the council to see if they would bless additional work to be done on it by staff. I don't think it necessarily needs a formal report more than a roundtable discussion with them because I don't think everyone here knows how many different directions sidewalks have gone over time.
It has piqued my interest, I will say that.
And if we can get something that's manageable and isn't so hodgepodge as it is now, I think some uniformity is necessary and that would be my way to approach it.
Maybe we could put it on the future agenda so we could give staff direction because really we can't, can we? We can't really direct because it's not, we can talk.
Who I would suggest is Zach. Zach brought it up. He knows a lot of history and he, we had a small discussion about it and he understands, I mean, he agrees, he understands. So I think the lead staff would be Zach. Do you agree?
I certainly, Zach, would need to be involved to clarify the point of like who initiates, right? The plan, so all committees and commissions will have a work plan typically that they get approved by the council. The planning commission is a little bit different in that the work plan in front of the planning commission is the advancement of code amendments and private development applications. So, so we don't have a set agenda separate from those items, which is why I raised the point of the grant. I think that that would be the most logical way where that would, could be advanced without a direct or a council directive and would potentially solve that issue of staff availability. I don't have staff availability right now. I have four vacancies in our division, so I don't have the manpower to do the survey work or research in the immediate term, but we've done this before. So North Beach Historic District was, that work was predominantly done through a consultant, including some of the survey work and research, et cetera, that they helped to compile and get to the finish line. So that's the same grant that we use for the North Beach District. That's what I'm seeing as the most likely avenue. I think it makes sense to start with a study session that, yes, doesn't necessarily involve a photo survey of the city, but brings in Zach and anyone else who has some of that historic context that we can share with the commission, get your feedback and maybe filter that potentially into something like a grant application.
That, I mean, yeah. And I'm hearing that that's a minimal staff impact. It's basically asking Zach to come, spend half hour with us and tell us what's working, what's not working, what does he need, what additional support can we give him and go from there. You okay with that, Scott?
If, if, if we do that, which sounds great, I think that it would be great if we had a few photos of the different things.
Why don't we task Commissioner Davis with that responsibility? Yeah.
Or if you could provide the area so that we could on our own go have a walkabout?
Yeah.
So how about?
You don't have to go far.
It's right enough. Right there, okay.
Okay. So just to summarize then this, Jonathan, I guess we're asking if you could invite Zach to a study session for him to just bring his vast knowledge of the situation to the meeting and give us his thoughts. And we're looking for ways that we can achieve a, you know, some future state where there's some more consistency and get his thoughts around that. And Commissioner Davis will come with some pictures and maybe you can coordinate with Zach, maybe email those to him in advance and he can, he can put it, put it in his PowerPoint. Okay. If that's okay with everybody and if that's okay with you, Jonathan, then we'll leave, we'll leave it there.
And I have a quick teaser. So more to come, but I've done some of this in the past because I've noticed the same thing. So just so everyone has a quick visual of what the reference is. So here's an example of an apron that's red concrete, but either side is tile, whereas this apron is all tile. There's some of the damage in one of the locations and then, you know, we see that there's a different style potentially that was intermixed or maybe it was concrete that was poured. This, I believe, is just the red concrete over time. So these are some of the, just very quick visuals of what was being raised tonight.
Okay. All right.
The charm.
Yeah. That's, some people call that charm, you know, it's eclectic. But if, but if we can, if we can bring some cohesiveness to it and maybe address the wear and tear, safety and do it in a way that it maybe brings more light to it than, say, an engineering staff document, I think that's good. So thanks for bringing that up. Does anyone else have something they want to bring up? Mr. Crandall, you? Gary?
Scott? I'd just like to point out that with those photos, Mr. Lightfoot was truly Johnny on the spot.
That was impressive. Karen, anything that you want to have? Okay, Jonathan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. We, I've mentioned this in the past, if anyone is interested in the California Preservation Conference that's at the end of May, I have a quick flyer that indicates some of the sessions that are on that and Meredith will make your, will sign you up and make your hotel reservation if you are interested. So this, I'll leave on the edge here if anyone is interested in looking at that. So we, we have budget typically on a rotating basis for a couple of commissioners to participate in both the Planning Commissioners Academy and this conference. And so we have carryover from that other one that we didn't fill the spots. So, so three or four people would be welcome to go to this if there's interest.
Commissioner Crandall and I did the, the planning commissioner training boot camp, whatever that was called last year, and it was in Garden Grove, so we could just drive there and drive home. And, yeah, they're very educational. So it's good to get, continue an ed, I think, if you're on the board here. So for those, I'm encouraged to look at the flyer.
Yeah. And commonly they do field trips too, so there's some interesting things that they go through. Next would be Zach. Our senior planner sent out a notice that we did post early, the that, uh, we did post early the draft, um, uh, text for the housing action plan item that'll be on your next agenda, May eighth. So if you have any questions on that, by all means, please reach out to us. We'd love to schedule a, a one-on-one with you to go over any of those questions. It is a, a meaty code section, um, and I, I expect it to likely come to the planning commission more than once. But, uh, if you have any questions, please, uh, reach out. We'd love to schedule time to go over any of those in advance. Uh, and then finally, um, the, the one thing that we had, uh, on the agenda yesterday with city council, uh, was a grant application. So we've been working with, uh, um, Leslia and plan to have a grant application in front of, uh, the coastal commission at their June meeting. Uh, and that application would cover a few things related to our IP. So just giving, uh, including you in on, uh, some of the things that we're looking at accomplishing through that. Uh, one would be refreshing the parking study. We used to do that on a biannual basis. That was disrupted by COVID. So we're hoping to have that reset in a way that is done by professional, not just by interns, as we've done, uh, for some years in the past. Um, and tied to that potentially, uh, setting some parameters on in Luffy. Um, we have a section of our municipal code that touches on in Lufis, but it's dormant. And, and I don't imagine us reusing that section. So this will be an opportunity to evaluate whether or not we could bring that back into consideration, all as part of the IP. Um, and, and then finally, related to that is looking at, seeing whether the, the coastal commission would, um, support some, um, staffing services that would free up, uh, our existing staff who's knowledgeable at the IP to spend less time, uh, at the public counter and doing other things of that sort, um, so that they can focus on the IP. So we, we are going to try to really make a push on that item and get that forward for consideration. Uh, there's definitely some, um, some things that will have to be talked about when that gets to the, towards the finish line. But we want to at least complete that work product so that, uh,
Are we involved in that in any way?
Uh, not in the drafting of the IP, but it will come before you. You will have a, a view of, um, of those drafts. And there's also, we already circulated one public draft. I think that there's a good chance with these amendments that we'll do another circulation of that public draft for comments. So that concludes my comments for this evening.
Got one question for Jonathan. It was either the newspaper or city council minutes or whatever, they were talking about how they were going to reappoint commissioners and, uh, committee members. And one of them was, um, if everybody was going to stay, just pass through and not do additional interviews. Would it be beneficial to them if we knew if, um, commission members who are up for reapproval are going to reapply? So they know if it's?
Did that pass?
I don't, I don't know. That's why, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
I, I'm not certain on that point. So I'll, I'll get clarification from the clerk's office. And then, uh, if that, if that would be valuable, then I'll, I'll reach out to everyone and, and get that information.
I would imagine the clerk would do that as well.
Well, I just want to make sure that that would make their decision. Great. We've got a commission that works and they all want to stay. Hallelujah.
Yeah, that, that would be great if it did pass. I know it was on the agenda last night. I didn't get a chance to watch that yet. So, uh, I did email our clerk that I thought that was a good idea. It saves a lot of time. So hopefully it, it went forward. Okay. Jonathan, are we meeting again on the eighth of May? Is that the, is that what you want us to adjourn to?
Correct. Yes, we'll be meeting on the eighth. Again, with that housing action plan being, um, the large item, we'll probably have one or two other items on that agenda as well.
Okay, great. Someone want to move us to adjournment?
I'll move that we adjourn to May the eighth, twenty twenty four, at six P M. At the Senate, many city hall.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner McCacken and seconded by Prescott Loefler. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.